Just a couple of seconds. I'm going live, so I'll let you know when I'll do this. Where's my meeting?
Down.
Okay.
Welcome, everyone. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Town of Essex Committee of Adjustment. Call the meeting to order. I am the vice chair but chairperson until our chairperson shows up. He's running a little bit behind. The order of today's meeting will be under my direction. All items on the agenda must be acknowledged by me prior to any discussion, presentation, or decision. When I acknowledge you to speak, you can address me as Mr. Chair. Please be advised that all proceedings and decisions of this committee of adjustment are undertaken without bias or conflict of interest. If there are any conflicts of interest, members of the committee, including myself, will declare the conflict either at the beginning of the meeting or may declare prior to an application being heard. All members of the audience that wish to speak with, wish to speak will be allowed to do so when acknowledged by myself in accordance with the published agenda. When invited to speak, please approach the podium at the back of the room and turn the microphone on to speak by pressing the button. Wait a second or two for the microphone to turn on with a brief bite before speaking. We ask that all attendants be respectful and speak to the application at hand only. Any topics or discussions that deviate from the application at hand will not be tolerated. All members of the public that wish to speak will be granted a maximum of five minutes. Please also note that this meeting is being livestreamed to the town's YouTube page. Like to introduce our media adjustment members. I have Matthew Child on the right, William Baker, Marcia Buckner, Doreen Lester, and over here we have myself, Dan Sowe. We have Lloyd Chadwick from our Director of Development, Rita Jabo from our Manager of Planning Services. And that is it for today. Our list here, so. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that this land is the traditional, excuse me, traditional territory of the Three Fires Confederacy of First Nations comprised of the Ojibwe, the Ottawa, and the Patois, and of the Wheeran Wendet peoples. We value the significant historical and contemporary contributions of local and regional First Nations and all of the original peoples of Turtle Island who have been building and working in from time immemorial. Do I have any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none. During the adoption of the published agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 6.4 to the first application and subsequently item 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, 6.10, next in line. That's my motion.
Okay. We have a, Doreen, second. All in favor? Motion carried.
We've got to go to the minutes.
Item 6.4.
Do the minutes first.
A-11-25, 800 County Road 13, Heather Marchand and David Clea. Application for minor variance has been received by the Town of Essex Committee of Adjustment for the lands located at 800 County Road 13 in the former township of Colchester South, Ward 3. The applicants are looking to permit the expansion and enlargement of illegal non-conforming residential use. The applicant is looking to convert a portion of an existing accessory structure into a additional dwelling unit. The ADU will have a gross floor area of 179.9 square meters or 1,936 square feet, and will be two stories in height with a building height of 6.85 meters, 22.5 feet. Okay. Administration, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, on the screen is a few slides that we have for you to help you better understand the application. As the chair has already explained, the subject property is located at 800 County Road 13, which is just south of the town limits of Harrow Center. The underlying designation in the official plan for the subject lands is agricultural, but the zoning of the subject lands is actually Commercial District 3.1, which is a highway commercial use. This zoning district doesn't permit residential uses, but it is acknowledged that there are lawfully existing residential uses on the property that have existed before the passing of the zoning bylaw, which prohibited the use of residential on the property. So, as was explained earlier, the proposal is to permit the expansion and enlargement of the lawfully existing residential use, and specifically it's to allow for the development of an additional dwelling unit within an existing detached accessory structure. And you can see on the screen where the existing main dwelling is located. Just right of that is an existing accessory structure, and that is what the applicants are looking to convert into an additional dwelling unit. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide provides a site plan. It indicates the total floor area that the proposed additional dwelling unit will occupy within the existing accessory structure. As was noted earlier, the gross floor area of the additional dwelling unit is 179.9 square meters, which equates to 1,600 square feet. It will not occupy the entire floor space of the existing accessory structure. And in comparison to the existing dwelling, the existing dwelling is larger, has a gross floor area of, sorry, it's a little bit smaller, it has a gross floor area of 40 square meters, and it is also two stories. In terms of application, this additional dwelling unit, even though residential uses are not permitted in the agricultural area, may be permitted under the Planning Act if the use is like the existing use of the land, even though it's lawfully existing. Next slide, please. So, in terms of determining consistency with provincial planning policy, the provincial planning statement doesn't actually have policy respecting lawfully existing uses. What we do have to look at is what the policy is for permitted uses in prime agricultural areas. So, under the provincial planning statement, additional dwelling units are permitted in prime agricultural areas. Under the County of Essex and Town of Essex official plan, there are policies respecting lawfully existing uses, and specifically, they may be permitted when no boundary adjustments are required to facilitate the use, when they're limited in scale, and there's adaptive reuse, such as the conversion of an existing accessory structure, when there's buffering, when there's no buffering or screening required, and when there's no conflict with compatibility with neighboring uses. And in terms of the zoning bylaw, we have evaluated the proposal with respects to the regulations respecting additional dwellings located outside of settlement areas, and the proposal does comply with the zoning bylaw in that respect. So, in evaluating the policy for this proposal, it is our opinion that the proposal is consistent with the provincial planning statement, conforms with the County and Town of Essex official plan. Next slide, please. We have circulated the proposal, as is required under Ontario regulation, to all property owners within 60 meters of the subject site. We didn't receive any comments from circulated members of the public, and that's as of November 12th. There might be members that are here tonight to speak on the application. And additionally, we did circulate the application to agencies, both internal to the Town of Essex and external, including the County of Essex. We received no objections from circulated agencies. We did receive one comment from the County of Essex, which stated no objections, but did remind us that they are required to obtain a permit from the County of Essex prior to construction of any new accesses or structures. Next slide, please. So, in consideration of the planning policy and the comments received as part of circulation, it's the Planning Division's recommendation that the minor variance be approved, subject to the following conditions, that the applicant obtain a building permit from the Town of Essex. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the applicant? No? Okay. Questions from the public? Seeing none. Any questions from the committee? Okay, make a motion.
Approve with the conditions as noted by Ms. Jabo.
Motion carried. Okay. Now the next, was it 6.7? 6.7, B-30-25, 169 and 173, Patrick Crescent, Essex Nonprofit Homes Inc., agent is HRK Realty Services Limited. I'll give it over to Rita.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, if there's a lull between whenever you hand it over to me, it's because I'm waiting for the camera to center itself. Okay. So, again, on the screen, we have a presentation for you to help explain this proposal, and this proposal is, is in the same area as the next two items on the agenda that we have moved up. So, we have lumped the applications together. You will be making separate motions on each application, but in the interest of explaining the development, because they are linked, we are going to prepare, we have prepared a presentation that looks at all of them together. So, excuse me. Beginning with the applicant for these files, the applicant is Essex Nonprofit Homes Incorporated, and we wanted to give you a bit of a background on Essex Nonprofit Homes. Essex Nonprofit Homes is an affordable housing provider in the Town of Essex. They provide 120 affordable homes for 348 people, including 158 children and 24 seniors in the Town of Essex. Their development, and we have, in the next slide, we will show you where their development is located in the town, but their development was actually built 47 years ago under a Canada Mortgage and Housing Program. Their housing stock actually represents 40% of Essex's affordable rental housing stock, and since at least a couple of years ago, they have secured funding to develop new affordable units. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, in this slide, you'll see the general location of the Essex nonprofit development. This is not the specific location of any specific property that we are going to discuss today, but this is the general location of those lots. The official plan designation for this development is residential. This development is located in the settlement area of Essex, and the underlying zoning designation for this development is Residential District 1.1, which permits single unit, two unit, and three unit dwellings. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, beginning with application B-30-25 and A-12-15, we are looking specifically at the properties located at 169 and 173 Patrick Crescent, and they are two separate lots in terms of addressing, but in terms of their legal status, they are, they are one lot. So, the extents of those lots of the subject lands are identified in yellow. They're, they're highlighted in yellow for you. The proposal for you today through B-30-25 is to create a new 351.7 square meter residential lot. And if you are looking at the slide and you're looking at the figure that's, that has green and in blue as a, as an overlay over the subject lands, this new law is identified in blue. The retained lands, which is the area in green, will have an area of 491 square meters. And for the purpose of this application, we explain the retained land area for, for the individual properties being 169 Patrick and 173 Patrick. So, for 169 Patrick, the retained land area will be 491 square meters, and the retained land area for 173 Patrick will be 488.6 square meters. And on the severed lands and on 173 Patrick, the purpose of this consent is to help facilitate the development of a three-unit dwelling, which is essentially a building with three dwelling units. To facilitate the consent, the applicant also requires a minor variance, and specifically the minor variances required to reduce the minimum rear yard depth for 169 Patrick from the required 7.5 meters to 6.6 meters, to reduce the minimum lot width and lot area for the severed lands from 12 meters and 360 meters respectively, to 11.2 meters and 351.7 square meters respectively, and to reduce the interior side yard width for the severed lands to 1.2 meters on both sides, whereas our bylaw requires 1.2 meters on one side and 3 meters on the other side when there is no attached garage. Next slide, please. So, looking ahead now, a little bit north to application B-31-2025 and A-13-2025, this property again is, it's two separate parcels, two separate addresses, but it is actually one on title. It is 118 and 122 Michael Drive, and again, you can see the extents of the subject lands highlighted on the screen for you. The proposal is to create a new 407.3 square meter residential lot, and you can see the severed lands identified in blue and fixed to. The retained lands, which are identified in green, will have an area of 513 square meters. That's for 118 Michael Drive, and 408 square meters for 122 Michael Drive. Again, three-unit dwellings are proposed on the severed lands and 118 Michael Drive. This application also requires a minor variance to facilitate the consent, and specifically, variances are required to permit a reduction in the minimum rear yard depth for 118 and 122 Michael from 7.5 to 6.09 meters and 6.2 meters, to reduce the lot width for the severed lands from 12 meters to 11.2 meters, and to reduce the interior side yard width for the severed lands to 1.2 meters on each side. Next slide, please. Thank you. The third application in this development pertains to 130 Kim Court, and you can see the extents of that law highlighted in the first figure. The proposal is to create a new 567.4 square meter residential lot, and that's identified in blue in the second figure. The retained land area is 600 square meters. And again, there is a proposal to construct two three-unit dwellings on the severed and the retained lands, so two dwellings altogether. There is an existing dwelling on 130 Kim Court, but that dwelling is proposed to be demolished to make way for the new construction. There is a requirement for a minor variance to facilitate the consent, and that minor variance would seek to reduce the minimum rear yard depth for the severed lands only from 7.5 meters to 4.8 meters, and this is largely due to the irregular configuration of the lot. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, we have evaluated the proposal's consistency with provincial policy as well as its conformity with Town of Essex and County of Essex policy together. With respects to the provincial planning statement, the planning statement states that we shall provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities to meet the needs of market area residents by establishing and permitting affordable housing targets and affordable housing options. And this is mainly done through residential intensification, which includes the creation of lots, and the provincial planning statement also tells us that we are to promote densities that efficiently use land and resource and optimize servicing infrastructure, which is available, as well as public service facilities. So, in assessing consistency, we have found that the proposals are consistent with, with the provincial planning statement. The County of Essex official plan also prioritizes increasing the supply of affordable housing, and the Town of Essex official plan states that we must meet all conditions for consents under section 6.4, and that includes being consistent with the provincial planning statement as well as conforming with the official plan. And we must also meet the conditions under section 5.7 for lands designated residential. More information on how this proposal conforms with the Town of Essex official plan is found in the planning comments, but in summary, we have found that the applications do conform. And finally, we have also determined that the applications comply with the Town of Essex zoning bylaw. The intended use of the severed and retained lands is permitted bylaw. Three-unit dwellings are permitted. The applications, in terms of their development proposal, complies with parking, building height, front yard setbacks, landscaping, and lot coverage regulations. There are variances required from the zoning bylaw, but those variances are considered minor and desirable in order to support a more affordable housing in the town. Next slide, please. So, specifically in terms of how the minor variances do, do meet the tests of, of the Planning Act as well as the official plan for the Town of Essex, we have provided this slide. So, the first four tests are common for any minor variance application in the Planning Act. A minor variance must meet the intent of the official plan that must be maintained, and as we explained, the proposed use is permitted in the county and in the town's official plan. It must meet the intent of the zoning bylaw. So, in this case, the proposed use is permitted in the Town of Essex zoning bylaw. The intent of the regulations that are being varied, such as lot width, lot area, side yard, and rear yard setbacks, will continue to be maintained as applicants have demonstrated the proposed use can fit on the severed and retained lands with no impact on parking regulations, and the proposed use will continue to maintain that rear yard amenity area and appropriate spacing between parcels. The proposal is considered minor. There is no adverse impacts on neighboring uses as a result of the variances, and the proposal is appropriate and desirable for the development because the variances will help the state, meaning it'll make it easier to build compact form housing to accommodate more affordable housing units in the Town of Essex. And then finally, the Town of Essex does have two specific tests to evaluate a minor variance on, and that includes its compatibility with the character of the neighborhood. So, in this case, the neighborhood is developed for residential uses. The variances will not impact on that character or on any of the character giving elements, such as front yard setbacks, parking patterns, or building massing. And lastly, the, the last test is that the circumstances are particular to the site. So, in this case, the variances are required to accommodate more affordable housing units. Next slide, please. We have circulated the applications to members of the public who live within 60 meters of the subject site. We, we did receive one comment as of the publication of, of this presentation, and that comment was submitted to committee members for their consideration tonight. Otherwise, we received no objections from internal departments, Town of Essex departments, and no objections from external agencies, including the County of Essex and the Essex Region Conservation Authority. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, given the proposal's consistency with the provincial planning statement, as well as its conformity with Town of Essex official plan policies and County of Essex official plan policies, the Planning Division is recommending approval of the applications subject to the following conditions, which are standard, save and accept for condition number seven, which is that the home located at 130 Kim Court be demolished, and of course, that condition would be specific to that application. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Is there any questions from the applicant?
So, Hal Kersey here. I'm, I'm online. Don't have... Yeah, I don't, I don't have any specific questions. I want to thank town staff for doing a marvelous job in helping us work through these complex applications to provide for much-needed affordable housing in the Town of Essex. Just available for questions. I know my associate, Hans Kogel, is in the audience, and if there are any specific questions, he represents the ownership and is available to answer those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from a gentleman that's here? Represented? No? Any questions from the audience? Public? Yep. If you could, can you please come up to the podium, state your name, and hit the button, please?
I'm just curious about 6.7, B-30-25, 169 and 173, Patrick Crescent. Will there be a three-tier unit dwelling being built on the retained lands?
But administration answer that one?
Through the chair to the delegate. There is a proposal for a three-unit dwelling on 173 Patrick, which is a part of the retained lands, yes.
Okay, but there's nothing going to be built on the house that's already there on the retained lands?
Thank you. And again, through the chair, there is no proposal for anything on the other portion of the retained land, which is 169 Patrick Crescent, but I, I would defer to Hans, the applicant, unless I'm mistaken.
I'm just curious, because somebody lives in that house, so.
Well, will you answer the delegate's question regards to that?
Yeah. No, at the current time, no, that is correct. There are no plans to construct any, anything other than that existing house that is there now.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Okay. Any questions from the committee members?
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chair, a very comprehensive set of packages here. Each of the planning reports are very clear that no written input had been provided for many neighbors. We did receive, as you indicated, Rita, a written comment that was dated, I think, the 14th of, of November. And just, just to clarify, there were a number of issues raised in that that corresponds, but to clarify too, that I was able to parse out anyway. Questions for administration, two of them. Is sanitary sewer capacity in Essex Centre adequate? Is sanitary sewer capacity in Essex Center adequate to service the proposed dwellings?
It is.
And the second question, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you, is can you just remind the committee, what's the process for addressing building foundation drainage and site drainage?
Through the chair. So in terms of new home construction, that has to go through the Building Division. They ensure that new home construction is compliant with the Ontario Building Code. And the Ontario Building Code actually requires rear yard drainage and connections to the storm sewer that's available along the street front for any new infill home development. So at the time of building permit, they will look at such matters as footing, as soil conditions, and as drainage.
Anybody else in the committee have any questions? Seeing none? Okay. I'm going to say that we'll just be going through all of them and do a motion. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move 6.7, Application B30-25, for 169 and 173 Patrick with the conditions outlined.
Hey, do we have a seconder? Doreen? All in favor? Motion carried. He said 6.8. So we're going to do 6.8 now, right? Okay. Do I have a motion for 6.8? Matthew?
To move the staff recommendation for Application A12-25. Yeah, with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Right. Motion 6.9, do I have a motion to move it?
Motion to approve 6.9, known as B31-25, with the conditions as noted and recommended by Rita. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Bill? All in favor? Motion carried. 6.10. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to put a motion forward to approve 6.10, A13-25, with conditions as recommended by the manager of planning. Thank you.
Okay, seconder? Matt? All in favor? Carried. Do I have a motion for 6.11?
Motion to approve Application B32-25 with the conditions noted in the staff report.
Very good. Seconder, Bill? All in favor? Motion carried. 6.12. Do I have a mover? Bill? Matt? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. You are good to go, sir.
Thank you, all of you.
And our chair shows up. Bill? We are going to move it over to you.
To look for a motion to adopt the community adjustment minutes for October 21st. Moved by Doreen, seconded by Dan. All good? Motion carried. All right, and I guess we're moving to Application B18-25. Oh, one second, hold on.
We have to bring it back to the table because it was deferred. So we have to...
All right, can we have a motion to bring it back? Applications B18-25, B19-25, and B20-25. Motion by Doreen, seconded by Bill. All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, now we'll hand it over to Rita for the presentation for the three.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Just going to give Ms. Buckta a moment to get our presentation up. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Application B18, B19, and B20, 2025. And as was noted earlier, these applications were first heard on September 16th of this year, and they were deferred at that meeting. The subject lands are actually three separate parcels, identified as 195, 197, and 199 Bryan Avenue. They're located in the settlement area of Essex Center, and their underlying official plan designation is residential. You can see the three separate parcels highlighted on the first figure at the very top tree. The zoning category for the subject lands is Residential District 1.1, which permits single-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, three-unit dwellings, as well as semi-detached dwelling units. Our zoning bylaw also permits additional dwelling units in any of those types of housing options. The proposal is to subdivide each of the three parcels to facilitate the construction of a semi-detached dwelling unit on each of the lots. Each of those semi-detached dwelling units would have two additional dwelling units in them, and this would result in a total of 18 dwelling units over the entire parcel. Next slide, please. So the reason for the deferral was until such time as a traffic memo completed by a licensed professional traffic engineer was submitted to the satisfaction of the Town of Essex. That traffic memo, as was indicated in the committee's resolution, was to be completed at the applicant's expense, and it was to consider all three properties collectively, and it was to address the following: potential issues resulting from the development and the curvature of the roadway and its proximity to an intersection, as well as ingress and egress issues to and from the site resulting from the nature of the development for multi-unit dwellings and the proposed configuration of the driveways. Next slide, please. The applicant has completed or commissioned a traffic memo. The traffic memo was completed by a professional traffic operations engineer from R.C. Spencer Associates, which is a local engineering firm. The memo, in addition to the items that the committee had wanted to see, also included a supplementary on-street parking utilization study to ensure that any overflow parking demand could be sufficiently accommodated because it was a significant concern raised as part of public participation. In conclusion, the engineer was of the following opinion that the addition of site-generated traffic would have a nominal impact on Bryan Avenue West, that egress sightlines are clear for good decision-making, that there are 33 underutilized on-street parking spaces within a 200-meter walking distance that are more than sufficient to compensate for any overflow parking demands that are generated from the development and beyond the provided one-to-one on-site parking ratio that the zoning bylaw dictates, and that the proposed residential development will not adversely impact traffic operations in the area. Our planning comments summarize in greater detail the results of each of those items. The memo made no further recommendations for the development. The traffic memo was also reviewed by Town of Essex Infrastructure Services staff, who agreed with the conclusions. Next slide, please. So although not a reason for the deferral, there was comments from the committee regarding additional information that they had wanted to see. So specifically, members requested the floor plans as well as the bedroom plans and the numerical value for density. The floor plans were circulated, and they show two bedrooms on each level and per dwelling unit. So this would result in a total of 36 bedrooms within the entire development. The density is calculated based on lot area, and that density is actually 78 dwelling units per hectare. The density target is within range for residential areas permitting three-story semis with ADUs. And all planning policy documents support an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities in settlement areas such as Essex Center to meet the needs of current and future residents. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we have recirculated the applications to all property owners within that 60-meter radius of the subject lands, and any persons who submitted written comments or attended the September meeting and made delegations, they were all provided with notice of this deferred meeting date. All agencies were recirculated with the information that we have just received as well. We did receive, as of the date of this presentation, one comment from an area resident who continued to express concerns with the development, particularly with respects to parking and density. We have received additional comments since November 12th. We did not receive any new agency comments as part of the revised submission. Next slide, please. So in considering the application and its consistency with provincial planning statement as well as its conformity with the County of Essex and Town of Essex official plan and its compliance with the zoning bylaw, as well as the information that we have received with respects to parking concerns in the area, it is the Planning Division's recommendation that the applications be approved subject to the following conditions, and these are the normal conditions that we would impose on any application for consent, save and accept condition number seven, which is specific to the development and to Application B18-2025 only. And that's a condition respecting the construction of a privacy fence along Optimus Bridlewood Park. Thank you.
Does the applicant want to... I know he's online. Does Daniel want to add to Rita's presentation?
Not right now. No, that's okay.
Okay, we have a number of delegates who wanted to speak. If it's the first time, please go to the back and... Well, you can ask a question. It's up to... Well, let's move on to somebody who wants to speak. Then go to the back and speak.
Am I waiting for a camera? Are we good? Okay. My name is Jonathan Little. I live at 190 Bryan Avenue West. Last time we were here... I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your last name. I'm just going to refer to you as Daniel, if that's okay. Daniel announced to all of us that he had new plans to put in a parking facility in the back, and that hasn't been addressed here at all. And I was wondering if we could...
Note them down, and we'll respond to them at the end of the delegation speaking. So we'll note it that you were curious about the parking, and if the committee chooses to ask the applicant or administration, we'll go further, okay?
Will we be given an opportunity to ask questions after?
No. We're going to be... We've got a lot of people here. We want to keep this moving forward. It's going to be up to the committee to make the decision, and we're going to take the questions that we think are relevant that will help us make the decision. And we will forward that on to the applicant or administration, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Okay? Yes, please. So I can ask that... I'll be given an answer at some point, and then we'll have another discussion after that?
Depends on what the committee wants to do.
Okay. All right. Okay. Sorry. I do have a couple of thoughts. First of all, in respect to the traffic memo that was made, will those results be available to the community? Will they be written in language that us laypeople will be able to understand? I'm sorry, I never got the engineer's ring. And I fear that there may be some technical jargon in there. Also, we were told just by Rita right now that there were comments submitted by other residents. Will we be able to hear those read publicly?
If the committee chooses to want to hear those comments in the public?
Just myself personally, I would like to know what other residents that couldn't make it tonight had to say about...
Well, the residents could be here, so let's just let them speak.
I... Sir, I hate to point out that you were late and delayed. I don't know why, and that's fine.
Anything to do with the application? Do you want to speak to the application, or do you just...
I just... I don't think it's fair that you would dismiss these people and not let their voices be heard.
All had the committee comments, and we've all read them. And if we choose to let them be known, we'll go from there. So let's go... Let's keep this going on, sir.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Twenty... So I'm asking a question to administration. Are we permitted to hear public comments if they are in addition and different than the previous comments that came in for this application?
Thank you. Through the chair, yes. This is what this section of the meeting is for.
Can you go on, Mr. Little?
Okay, thank you. I did do some research because, again, I forgot your name, Daniel, did talk about a proposed parking lot. I was looking at that, and I was reviewing the Yale Environmental Review, an article written by Gabrielle Mickel, where she discussed the environmental impact that these have on the surrounding area. They create what's called urban heat islands. They are pockets within municipalities with higher temperatures relative to outlying areas. They are created when municipalities replace natural surfaces and vegetation with lower albedo surfaces. That's the ability to retain and release heat. These, as it was shown, actually... One test showed that an area that was paved was 59 degrees Fahrenheit hotter than the nearer grass field. The air above it was 35 degrees hotter. This resulted in the surrounding homes having an increase of 12% in their cooling cost. So each time, there was an interjection that just keeps my time rolling?
Keep on?
I mean...
I was just giving you the heads up.
I just...
I'll give you a little grace, but I'm just letting you know where it's not going to be much longer than a few minutes.
Okay? What I'd really like to talk about is what's called livable communities. Livable communities are communities that are walkable. They have services that are available to everybody. They're safe communities. What you proposed here does go against part of those ideals. It doesn't make it safer. I know that there's a traffic memo, but none of us have been able to see it. There are sightlines. There are two schools in that area. We're not... I don't know, is that counting parking on both sides of the street further down? There are a lot of questions that honestly haven't been answered here, and I'm afraid that they just won't be. And at the same time, I'm afraid that this small community that has a heart, it has a sense of community... There's a 73s game going on right now that I'm sure a lot of us would like to be at, but we're here. Why? Because we care about this community. This, what is being built right here, it goes outside. What was proposed originally when I bought my house, I know when my neighbors bought their house, some of them paid extra because there was going to be a park there. I don't think what we're doing, and I understand the... I don't think what we're doing, and I understand the laws that have been created. These are laws for Toronto. This isn't laws for small town. I understand that they still apply here. And this parking, this three parking spots, one is going to be blocked by another resident. How many homes in this area, how many residents have more than one car in their for their family, right? I would say the average is probably about two and a half.
Alright, thanks, Mr. Little. It's been, I gave you, I gave you an extra minute, so.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate your patience with me. I'm not an expert in this. I'm just a concerned citizen.
We all do our best. Is there anyone else to? A point of order, point of order. We're not going to have that this time. We're going to be, we're conducting a meeting. Go ahead there, sir.
My my issue is, I just want to understand as a. As a neighbor in this place where they're building. What? What powers do I have to change the outcome of this like? Personally, when I hear duplex, for example, I'm thinking two families. What I see proposed is going to be six families in one duplex. It feels like we're going to get crowded like, you know? So my question is, as a person who's going to be living two houses down the street. What power do I have? Say in what's going to happen or? You know? Basically, I'm asking why, if is there any reason to me being here? Is it going to help? In the way, in the direction this thing is taken, because. I feel like duplex should be two. Two homes, right? Two, two families. I hear it's going to be six families, a total of eight families. We're going to be crowded. But the question is, do I have a saying this, you know? Or is it a done deal? If I was saying this, I would say no, let's let's have at least two families to a duplex. That's that's the way I feel it should be. It normally should be. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who want to go ahead there, Ms. Bondi?
Thank you. Through you, Chair, and to the Committee of Adjustment. Uh, I do believe that the traffic memo. At the very least, the developer could come back and bring the traffic engineer to answer. Many of the members of the public's questions regarding parking sightlines. I got the traffic report. Through other ways, but I do believe it should be a public document attached to the Committee of Adjustment agenda so that everybody can see it. And understand it and ask questions. What I see from the traffic memo, and I'm no engineer, is that when it speaks to sightlines, all of the pictures of our empty streets. Which we know that if this development goes through, that they won't be empty streets. So so one thing I would love to see is a deferral until the traffic engineer can come back. And um, if you look at the previous application supported tonight, Essex nonprofits, they're building triplexes. But they're accommodating the parking on site. So one of the things that the traffic memo didn't address is is the parking issues to add thirty three parking spots. Into the neighborhood, I'd like to see more about where they're going to go. We also want to work on walkable, safe communities. As a mom with young kids or if a senior, if you're getting your groceries, if you're in a wheelchair. If you have to walk from a few blocks away in the winter, that is not a community that that we want to create. We want to have accessible communities. I do understand that intensification is coming and I support intensification. I think it's great. But we also have to make sure that we're not, um, you know, changing drastically changing the neighborhood. Obviously, people are engaged. They're out here tonight. So in the other meeting I did watch and like the previous gentleman before me speak. The um, member Baker asked about impacts to, or he asked a question about. Uh, visitor parking and that was when the developer did mention coming back and looking at. He said he wants to apply for another consent for adding a second driveway behind one nineteen and one uh seventeen. To build right away for overflow parking. That has not been addressed and the developer mentioned that he was going to do that. So another comment at one hour seventeen minute mark into the meeting. Uh, saying that it's a form of gentle density. However, the definition of gentle density also considers compatibility. And compatibility with parking issues that may result from intensification. And the issues from the parking aren't known, which now the parking memo speaks to the issues to the parking. But I still think the parking memo falls short in many ways. And it's not, nobody, our, even the Town of Essex engineer is also not here to explain from a Town of Essex point of view. So I think that the Town of Essex engineer should be invited to the Committee of Adjustment as well. So our director Chadwick from the Town of Essex at the one twenty minute mark said low density as we know it. Over the course of decades is changing and we know that it's changing. But also we have to take in traffic concerns and community safety. So we know both the Town of Essex and the county are looking at community safety plans. Which speaks to crime with prevention in the environment, which means. Uh, sightlines, you know, making sure that the children can get to the park without having too many cars on the road. And we know that the province wants intensification, intensification like this. The other thing to keep in mind is when we um, force private developers to put parking on public roads. Public taxpayers are actually paying for private parking, uh, private parking spots. You know, it's something that we want to get away from in the Town of Essex, like we have to maintain those roads. We have to work our snowplows, our street plows around them, when all of this should be thought ahead of time when a development is planned. So I'm really interested in seeing if the traffic engineer can come back. And I'm also interested in seeing from the developer, Daniel, what he's going to do about the request for visitor parking. And more onsite parking because that still has not been addressed. And once this is voted on, then you can never go back. And the community, the landscape of the the community will change forever. So it's one of those things where, you know, there's no real rush to get there, uh, because this is a forever move in the Town of Essex. Thank you.
Point of order, can we please? Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Sorry, could I, would I be able to comment?
No, Daniel, you can't speak. You can, but after.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, my name is Murray Curtis and I'd just like to address. Kind of brought up the last, well, the multi wave stop sign. From experience as a policeman for over thirty years. I found that probably seventy percent of vehicles do not stop. When it comes to multiple stop signs. And you're going to have, like, it's been addressed, you've got kids walking the street. Uh, somebody's going to get hit there. And that with. When you create that much more density in in the area. Thank you.
Oh, this.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Thank you through you. Um, I'd like to address through you that just to comment to the to the. To the participants in. Uh, audience that we're asking for decorum not to applaud after everybody. We understand the emotional effect. However, we have to keep decorum so that we can keep moving, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Tiffany Polcock, for the record. Tiffany Polcock, Jubenville. I just want to say that I sent an email. A letter outlining all my concerns with the proposed uh. Document or documents, applications, and I'm here to answer any questions that the committee may have. Uh, basically, I was more concerned as a technical aspect just because I have an engineer. Thank you.
This, um. You, you, you want to go and speak? Yep.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I'd like to say sharing very good speech. And second of all, I agree with this gentleman here because I love my driveway was right there at the stop sign. And at least seven percent of the people, if not more. Like I've got videotape. Going through the stop sign and all that, and I'm telling you, with all the cars that are going to be parked around there, it's going to be chaotic. It's going to be just crazy. And also. The thirty three allegedly parking spots. Is that considered both sides of the street? Because you're only allowed to park on the street on one side at a time. Because I went down my street. My little block, you can only fit three parked cars on one side. Each month I went down. Around the bend, same thing, three cars on one side, four cars on the other side. So I don't know where these thirty three parking spots are coming up. It's like, so like, that's why I would like to see the report as well, is pretty well, everybody else would. That's all I got to say.
Go ahead there. Actually, no, there was a guy over here that wanted. Oh, sorry, you did. Oh, okay, okay. Alright, the lady at the back, thank you.
I live on Sweetman right by that stop sign. I agree with Mayor Bondi about the parking. So basically what I am hearing is that the committee and the gentleman. Who wants to construct the homes is interested in overflow parking of his units. What about all the existing neighbors that live there and have been paying taxes all these years? Now you're going to take away any of their visitor parking. Who benefits? He does, not the people that have paid eight, nine hundred thousand for their homes. And I would like to poll the committee, how many of you would be adamant? Against something like this coming to your neighborhood and do any of you live in this neighborhood? Yeah, you do not want to admit it, but anybody that lives there now, when you take away thirty three parking spots. We are not going to be allowed to have any overflow or gas. But the people on the corner there that you're going to put this dense. Neighborhood into will have the privilege that the existing neighbors do not have. That's all I have to say.
Katie?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Midi, um, I'm speaking today in opposition to the proposal to construct three semi detached buildings containing six dwelling units each. Eighteen units in total on these three small residential properties. This proposal does not reflect smart planning. Nor does it respect the character needs or realities of the surrounding community. The developer has not taken the community into consideration. Placing eighteen units without proper parking on this limited footprint is excessive and incompatible with the neighborhood. It is deeply concerning that council did not previously recognize that our parking bylaw amendment. Applied only to commercial uses and that residential standards remained unchanged. As a result, council is now in the process of revisiting the bylaws specifically because of this proposal. That alone demonstrates that the current application is not aligned with the intentions of our planning framework. Smart planning does not involve residents of multi dwelling, multi unit dwellings parked in stacked tandem arrangements. Where one vehicle is blocked by another. At the last meeting, the developer stated that he could accommodate the parking shortfall by constructing a parking lot in the backyard. I want to be very clear, this is not permissible under the town's zoning or property standards. Rear yard parking of that nature is not allowed, nor does it align with our planning principles. Our zoning bylaw requirements or the expectations of the surrounding residents. Suggesting such a solution underscores a lack of understanding or respect for our municipal regulations. It is clear that the developer is attempting a workaround to the bylaws. And building these units in the cheapest way possible, a reasonable, community minded developer. One interested in meaningful compatible intensification would have proposed an apartment building, which would have required site plan control. Proper parking design and with visitor spaces and appropriate stormwater management. That type of development could have been planned comprehensively and evaluated appropriately. This proposal avoids all those safeguards. The development is also not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Its density, design and parking situation conflict with established land use patterns. And will create long term issues for residents and the municipality. I am also disappointed in the traffic study. I too was able to read it ahead of time. The study incorrectly identifies the location as being within a community safety zone. It is not. The zone ends before the site or begins after it depending on your direction of travel. The study also fails to consider the entrance to the nearby park. It does not meaningfully address the overflow parking that will inevitably split into a. Sorry, spill onto adjacent streets as a result of inadequate onsite parking. Most concerning, the traffic study assumes zero point four one vehicles entering or leaving the site per day per unit. A figure that does not reflect the realities of a small town like Essex. Essex is a bedroom community. With the current cost of living, most two bedroom units such as those proposed. Are likely to house two working adults or a working adult with older children. That typically means two vehicles per unit, not fewer than one. And given that Essex does not have public transit, it's almost certain that these residents will commute outside the municipality for work. The assumption of zero point four one trips per unit is not reasonable in this context. Traffic study requirements at the provincial level need to be updated to reflect the very, very different travel behaviors and transportation realities of smaller urban centers. We are not Toronto and standards designed for large metropolitan areas should not be applied blindly to communities like ours. For all those reasons, I ask this committee not to support this application. Don't refer it, just don't support it. It is incompatible with smart planning. It does not fit the neighborhood. It fails to address traffic and parking realities. And it reflects an approach to development that prioritize cost cutting over community well being. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone, go ahead there, sir?
Well, Mr. Chair. Uh, Kim Karski, I'm a president that butts up against this property. Um, I agree with what everybody else is saying, my wife and I. Uh, one thing that we've talked about that hasn't been considered is the new recycle buckets that we've been all given. Um, the new trucks that come, they come with an arm that picks a bucket up. If you have all this overflow parking, all these spots, how are you ever going to get this, these buckets picked up? Just in addition to what everybody else says, we agree with everybody else.
Thank you. Go ahead there, ma'am. Over, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to everyone in the house, uh, thank you all. We are, we all have concerns. Um, I would just say. This. Uh, project. I do understand that the community has, I mean, the uh. The law supports certain types of, you know, structures, some building, but in this specific. Brian versus Sweetman area, it might not be completely feasible. Because of all the issues we're looking at. One is going to end up becoming a safety gross, gross, gross safety hazard. Children are riding their bikes, playing on snowball, just going around. It's and then we want to bring in more, you know? Occupant. We're, okay, these families that are coming, they're going to have their own children too. Where will all the children play? I live right there on Sweetman. My neighbors have children, babies that are just born. I'm talking newborns, newborn. We have children. Now this is not just going to be for today, it's going to be for tomorrow. One month, two months, three months. Our homes were built like during the COVID. Now we're what, three years, four years, five years forward? Now, imagine this new project that is coming in another two, three, how feasible is this gonna work? The truth is, I don't see this being plausible. It's not. Let's do something else. It's not gonna be good for the children. It's not gonna be good for our elderly. It's not gonna be, the, 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 um, uh, the law itself is okay in terms of, okay, it can accommodate two, three units and the likes, but for this specific area, Mr. Chairman, I don't think this is workable for this particular space. Look at the, you see the picture of the diagram of the plan? That, uh, demograph of that region is curved. So that alone, that curvature, how will the parking work? We have parking opposite. I'm on Streetman, I'm three oh eight, the other ones, and on different times of the month, cars can be parked. But it cannot, it can only accommodate how many cars? Now, we're going to have overflow from this corner of Brian. Where are they gonna be? This is going to become a gross, gross safety hazard. The, the, the drainage system for like, what, eighteen units? The original plan that the city created was to accommodate what we have right now. If we're gonna put anything extra, maybe that's plot. I'm not an engineer, I'm in the health sector, but looking at it just from my perspective, it can probably take maybe just, uh, single detached homes, like, single, single homes, maybe two or three max, single-family units, considering infrastructure. We're talking electricity, water, gas, and drainage system. We don't want flooding, we don't want things like that. And when we have sewage system, and then everybody start having sewage issues, we're gonna look at the drainage down the line? Please, let's review this. Please. I'm just appealing on behalf of every one of us. Please, let's, let's review this. If you still want to have a building, we cannot have eighteen occupants. We can't have eighteen. That is, it's just not, it's, I don't know. What about the children? What about the elderly? How are we gonna accommodate that? Please, let's review this. It's just, yes, the, the, the laws, the rules and what have you, but it's not gonna work for this area we have. The Brian and the Streetman thing, it's not gonna work for it. I hope we, we understand where we're coming from, please, and thank you. Thank you.
Is there any new? Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. Oh, sorry. So go ahead there, Mr. Pasco.
Yep. Okay, Rick Pasco. I'm a guy new to say except for a couple of things. I read that traffic memo, what I could pick up from what they put on the town site. Said there is not gonna be any sightline problems, not gonna be any traffic flow problems. We had a guy on the corner there had to park his pickup truck there because it wouldn't fit in the driveway anymore because of a sidewalk. And I can guarantee you that there was lots of sightline problems. You couldn't see around the thing. You had to stop, wiggle your way out and hope you didn't get smote. And you had a week for traffic coming, so there's gonna be lots of that. And as far as the safety thing goes, I can speak from very personal experience. I was coming west on Brian West and stopped at the stop sign on my motorcycle. Somebody came roaring, those, what I'm saying is those curves are already dangerous as it is. Without an overflow of traffic, with the speeding, blowing through stop signs, which we watch every day, all day, those curves are already dangerous. I'm sitting there minding my own business on my motorcycle at a stop sign, looking carefully because on a motorcycle, you got no room for a mistake. Somebody came around that corner, lickety-split, cut off the corner, blew through the stop sign, and nearly killed me. And I honked my horn. The driver's eyes were as big as dinner plates when they slammed on the brakes. And I just know that that's dangerous before we even put that there. So if we're gonna end up with all these units and they end up with two adult kids there that got cars because there's no other way to get work, we're gonna end up with fifty to seventy cars there. On three building lots, where are you gonna put them? And so I got a couple of questions you wanna take down because you wanna answer them at the end. Who's gonna recompensate us for our loss of property values? People are already bailing. We've had two guys bail out of our neighborhood. Now a guy at the end of the street put his house up for sale. No guys. And, uh, basically, I guess that's everybody covered everything else. So I'd like to thank you for giving me my time and hi, everybody.
Any new? Not seen anything from the public. I'm gonna go to the committee if they have any questions. Oh, oh, sorry. Was there someone in the back who wanted to speak? Oh, the applicant. Sorry, Daniel, did you want to speak?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, gonna make a couple of quick points. Um, I assume all the committee members have all read through the traffic memo. The engineer did the traffic study is more than capable of, of doing this properly and is certainly not biased in any way. And same goes for the Town of Essex departments that review these things. Now, when they, we got the first memo done, they, Kevin, I think it was, he made comments, they wanted a further study done into a bit more detail about a certain thing, and so we did, they did that. And then they've, they've deemed this to be appropriate. So I know there's a lot of emotions flying around here, but the facts are the facts. The facts are, we're, we're only proposing to build this because this is what the town bylaw allows. And we've obliged with the traffic memo. We have no control over that. Um, it was very extensive. I understand the public weren't privy to that. They just got a summary. That's not, nothing to do with us, but, you know, it was, it was reviewed by the person that's employed to take responsibility for these things on behalf of the town. It wasn't reviewed by someone that doesn't know what to ask or what they're looking for. So I don't want to lose sight of that because it's easy to, for, for, for people that don't do that as a profession, and we can throw things around, but the truth is, it was done by a professional. Um, and it was reviewed by a professional. So, and we keep throwing around these thirty-three surplus spaces. I'm assuming people read that from the summary. Um, it, it's not thirty-three overflow parking spaces. When they did the study, they did it on a Friday night. I believe there was a football game or something playing. It was deemed as peak hours, which is when it's gonna be the most busy, according to lots of data. Um, and there was only twenty-three percent of the available on-street parking spaces being used on a Friday night when people are at other people's houses, watching the game, doing all that stuff. So the thirty-three surplus spaces are what is left over. Um, it's, it's not, that's not the overflow. So I just want to bring back again to, we're building, we're proposing to build what your bylaws have set out, we can build. We've done the study, the studies come back. Your town is happy with it. There, there, so I, I don't see what the problem is in moving forward here because we're, you know, again, puts us in a difficult position here because we purchased this land to do this, having looked at the bylaws beforehand. And, and so this is, this is causing, you know, I hope this goes through tonight because otherwise it causes a big problem for us and a big precedence that you will be setting that the bylaws are not trustworthy. And that, you know, developers will go elsewhere to develop because this is our only failsafe. We can't put a never-ending time limit on closing on a piece of land when we go to buy it just so that we can give a town enough time to check the plans we've had to get done, and know it has to be done quickly. So your bylaws are the only thing that we've got to go from, and we're inside of that, and we were inside of that in the first meeting. We've met the other recommendation, which was the traffic memo. I don't see the problem here. This, I really hope this goes through. And I'll, I'll, I'll answer any other questions if anybody else has anything.
I have a question. I don't know if the applicant, but I am really struggling after hearing all the comments. I agree, but the parking, I, I'm struggling with that. There's cannot be enough parking for these units to have eighteen dwellings, the two, two bedrooms apiece, so guaranteed each person's gonna have their own vehicle. Um, how are they going to navigate getting in and out of the driveway itself while the pack in the street full? Uh, I do believe that's gonna cause a hazard. I do question the engineer's traffic study. In my opinion, right now, I would, I would consider deferral until the applicant, uh, comes back with, with a solution. She's already stated, uh, for the record, that he's already gonna be looking for the future to have an overflow parking in the rear of this. So, uh, in that, in that aspect, I, I, I can't support it, and I would say to defer it.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I'm gonna open my statements by saying, and what I've always said on many other applications, and what, in, in way, my principle in life is, what is legal and may conform may not always be right. No clapping. We're, we're, as a committee, put in a, a difficult position based on what the province is forcing down, based on what the zoning bylaws are permitting, again, but may not be right. There's a lot of things that have been raised today, which need answers, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm gonna make a comment too, like thanking Sherry Bondi as a resident coming forward and, and, and Katie McGuire as a resident coming forward. Some very good points were brought up with that. I do have to address, however, that council has put us in this position because when they sold this lot, it wasn't considered that this may happen. Okay, so that's another thing that we're forced to be positioned and make, uh, decisions. Also, there's a number of things that, questions that were asked and, and need to be answered and doesn't look like we can answer them individually now, but even one, our new, um, waste management coming up. Okay, now we're gonna, we have our, our biodiversity stuff that's gonna be picked up on a weekly basis in addition to other recycling, and there's been no mention of bins or storage areas to be put on these properties for this stuff, so. Again, there's a lot of questions that have to be answered, and, and I'm also now in the opinion that, why we, I don't know how to turn this down completely because it does conform. I think there still needs to be lots of answers, or lots of questions, I should say, answered. So, and, and having said that, I mean, the traffic report, um, and I, I'm been in, in business for a while, been in developments in terms of airport stuff. I had a hard time buying and understanding this traffic report. It was done on one of the best days in October, um, and I don't think everything was considered. I know it meets the minimum standard, so there's parking right now. It meets the minimum standard. Again, this may not be right. So, at, at this point, I'm just going to make my suggestion that I'm gonna say that I think this needs to be deferred from much, many more questions that have to be answered at this time. I may have more comments later, I'm not sure.
Hello, everyone. I agree with, with all actually of Bill's statements. We are put in, in circumstances that um, our hands are tied under certain, um, certain circumstances. The government, it comes down, the mandate comes down, and there are a set of regulations that, uh, we're not allowed to have an opinion on because they're regulations. Um, that being said, I do agree that there are some questions that haven't been answered, and the, um, just the process, we need to consider all of the, all of the angles and all of the, um, factors in this because if it is turned down and they appeal it, we need to make sure that we can prove we obtained all of the, the information that is needed to make and defend our decision. And for that reason, I recommend to defer, to bring back, or to bring in, not back, the, um, the engineer that, that wrote this paper so that we and the people of the community can ask the questions that they have. Thank you.
Hi there, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good, good discussion. I appreciate the perspectives of, uh, of, of the public as well as fellow committee members. Um, for me, um, you know, I read and understood the, the planning memo. Um, I have no doubt that it applied the guidance correctly, that the, you know, the Institute of Traffic Engineers guidance correctly, that the calculations were done correctly. Um, so for me, having more information about it isn't gonna be that helpful because for me, my struggle with that report is based on the assumptions that are baked into that Institute of Traffic Engineers guidance. For example, um, the criterion that, that parking will be assessed within two hundred meters of the subject site. Well, takes a couple of minutes to walk two hundred meters. So are all folks going to do that consistently with their children, with bags of groceries, if they have mobility issues, whatever? I just, I call into question that, that assumption, and that's something that, that, that the traffic engine, it's baked into the analysis. So I, um, I don't personally need to see more or a more detailed assessment on, on the traffic assessment. For, for me, the challenge I'm having with this application is more subjective in nature and isn't with the zoning bylaw because I think, as has been stated, um, and I certainly, uh, I'm sympathetic to the developer because, um, you know, the due diligence was done and staff have stated clearly that it does meet the zoning bylaw uh, conditions. For me, the issue is more subjective. Is, is the application consistent with, uh, existing neighborhood character and does it constitute orderly development? And I, I, I can't convince myself that it does, and I got two um, pieces of planning guidance here that I, that I, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to because, um, it, it may or may, may or may not be relevant down the road. So the County of Essex Official Plan, Section four A two twelve calls for opportunities for the integration of gentle density. And that's, that's a phrase we heard earlier tonight, in development, within primary development areas where gentle density is defined as, quote, additional housing units are provided a slightly higher density than adjacent single detached dwellings in a way that is compatible with the existing neighborhood, close quote. Taken together, the three lots we heard earlier propose a density of seventy-eight units per hectare, uh, which greatly exceeds the density of the, the existing surrounding neighborhood, which is primarily single family with, with a few duplexes. Uh, if each of those three lots was to support, uh, a single-family home, which is, may not be the preferred, um, uh, for, for some folks, but it would have a density of thirteen units per hectare. So for me, that isn't slightly higher density. That's significantly higher density. Uh, the second, um, uh, section, I'd like to point out also the Town of Essex Official Plan, Section six point four, which states that in considering an application for consent, the Committee of Adjustment should have regard to the continuation of an orderly, orderly development pattern. And for the same reasons, um, I, I just don't view this to have an orderly development pattern. The other concern I have, um, I think we all, uh, understand from the applications that there will be nine onsite, um, parking spots, which are immediately, obviously, on, on Brian and adjacent to the, um, entrance to Bridlewood Optimus Park. You know, it's, 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 it's one of the bigger parks in town. It's like three point two acres. Um, children and youth frequent that park, and it, it, I personally think there's a potential hazard for injury or worse. And so for those reasons, I have concerns with the application. I don't, I don't personally think we need to defer it tonight. Um, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Um, I do have a couple of questions for Daniel. Um, if he wants to. My questions are to, like, what, you did talk about parking in the back. Uh, I'm not sure how Uh, I'm not sure how, being that you want to subdivide these lots, how you're going to put a parking spot in the back when you only have one lot that has a access? The other question I have to you is what is your planning on dealing with garbage, recycling and, and, um, organic waste? Um, with so many units in one location? And are you going to be the landlord or are you going to be selling it to somebody who will take over this property or each property? Go ahead there.
Okay, um, no, we, we'll be the landlord. Yeah, we're not planning on, you know, I'm in construction. This is part of my retirement. This is what these are for. So now we'll be keeping them. Um, we don't intend to sell them. Um, the waste, uh, will have, um, will have something in the back of the properties, you know, that will keep it out of sight. And it will be up to people, you know, tenants, just like it is in every house to, to somewhat manage that. I, I don't live too far away, so I'll, I'll be by somewhat regularly, but yeah, we, we can, that's an easy thing really. We can, we can put in the back, we can enclose, we can, you know. Um, sorry, and after you, what was your first question? Sorry?
Extending parking. Like you said, you're, you're planning on doing something in the back. And you don't have any space to bring a, another car through, right? You've, you're, the lots are quite narrow after you put the building up. So you wouldn't be able to put a driveway to the back to put like an outbuilding or a garage back there. So I'm kind of interested on how your plans are to find extra parking that's on your properties.
What our plan was, and, and I don't know if this is feasible, which is why we've not pursued it, but, um, our lawyer instructed us that we can achieve that by crossing over, by just doing right of ways with us being the owner of all three. So that would be a way that we could access, we'd have to get a, uh, permission to have another driveway off the side of Brian there. And then we could drive behind. There's actually the one lot in the corner is substantially. Uh, we can get probably 12 to 15 parking spaces back there. We'd probably have to put up more of a blackout type fence, which we would do so that the rear neighbors wouldn't, be affected by headlights and things. But again, that's all easy stuff to figure out. So that, that would have been the, the thought process. Our lawyer confirmed that that's, that happens all the time. That's easy to grant permission for right of way access from one over one parcel to another. And with us being the sole owner across the three, it would be an easy thing to. Now the town might disagree and say that it needs variances, rezonance, things, whatever that, that might get muddled up and much more complicated. But there is a simpler way to do that and that would have, that would have been that.
Making an apartment building, but, um, and then my question, I guess, is administration, there is a, on the corner, the parking lot, there's a dip, looks like there was a sidewalk planned. Is there a sidewalk planned in front of these units? It's on the other side. Oh, it's on both sides. Oh, sorry, sorry. My, okay. I, I guess I answered my question. Go ahead there, Dan.
The applicant, how is the parking going to be enforced? Cause I've, I've seen other places that are dense and people got trailers, little trailers, campers, motorcycles and all sorts of such. That's going to tie up more parking space. So again, back to the, uh, the parking issues.
Yeah, well, we would do our best to enforce that, but, you know, really you're describing the impossible scenario there. Who can enforce anything like that? Like, you know, that's not, you know, if I, if someone has a party on the corner there and they invite 30 people and there's 15 cars up and down the street, who enforces that that doesn't happen? Like at some point, it's got to be reasonable. This is why we have bylaws. This is why we, they recommend we get a professional engineer to do a traffic study. It's not, can't argue with it. They're professionals. They know what they're doing. Like we have rules in place for this, right? Because how can we, I mean, where would we draw the line? How far, how much do we have to, to prove and backtrack and protect? Like how much further than the municipal laws that are in place? Like how much further do we have to go from that? Like, you know? Like we would do our best to, to govern that. Of course we would. We're not, we're not trying to, we also want to have good, happy tenants. You know, if they start causing problems and the neighbors then giving them problems and that's not going to go well for us either. It's in our best interest to find the right tenants, you know, there, there likely won't be families in here. There's, we've got a number of two bedroom apartment buildings across Windsor Essex. We don't have any families in there. The very, the very most dense that gets is, is a couple or, or a couple of friends. But there's not, there's not families there because they, they need more space. They're, they're not going to move into something like this. And it's probably going to be more too unaffordable for them anyway. So it's, yeah, we would do our best to govern that, but I would say like, like how, like how much are you expecting here? From, and how much would you expect from any development? Like the, the bylaws are there for a reason. They, they govern these things. They give the parameters that, that someone is, you know, worked through and agonized over and they've planned and said this is appropriate. You know, what, how, how far above that do we need to go here? Like, this is ridiculous.
Thank you there, Daniel. Do, I'm going to look through the committee for what they want to do. Do they want to defer? Do they want to deny? Do they want to approve? Go ahead there, Matthew.
Um, I, I appreciate the, the, the additional questions and, and responses. And, um, you know, as a committee member, um, we're beginning to see these duplexes of ADUs come before the committee. These types of developments, in my opinion, can work, uh, depending on location, can work depending on context. Uh, for me, uh, for the reasons I outlined earlier, um, it doesn't work at this location due to, um, uh, I, I don't believe it's, it's, it's an, it's gentle density or, or of slightly higher density. Um, and I don't believe it's orderly development. So, um, for, for those reasons, I'd move that we deny the application.
Dan. Okay, we'll put it to a vote. Or do you want to stay to it there, Bill?
Thank you. So I, I guess I, I need to understand, um, that if we're denying this tonight, what are the reasoning? What are the specific reasonings, uh, for this motion? I know you read some general comments, but what are the specifics of denial?
Specific, uh, member, Bill, it, it, in my opinion, the, um, the application doesn't meet the planning guidance laid out in Section, uh, 4A212 of the County of Essex Official Plan or Section 6.4 of the Town of Essex Official Plan. There are more subjective concerns, uh, than quantitative concerns, you know, that are spelled out in detail in the zoning bylaw in terms of height, units, side yard setbacks, et cetera.
Clara. Right. So can we, anyone else want to speak to the motion? Not seeing any. All in favor? All opposed? Motion denied on B 1825. We'll have to, point of order. Uh, we'll have to do a motion on B 20 dash 25. Matthew?
Ditto sufficient or? Ditto?
Ditto, is that?
Yeah.
I think so. Point of order, please. Seconder for Dan as well. All in favor of denying the application? Any opposed? Not seeing any. Motion passed. And application B 19 dash 25. Matthew? Hi, Bill. All in favor to deny application? Any opposed? Not seeing any. Application denied. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to, if everybody who's here for this application wants to leave, you're more than welcome to. But we will be moving on to which application. Actually, we're going to take a five minute break.
Uh, yes, thank you. And through the chair, I'm just going to give Ms. Buckta a moment to pull up our presentation. I know we're a little bit out of order. Thank you. Okay. Application B 27, 2025 is an application for a consent. And it concerns, um, vacant commercial land that's located at the corner of Maidstone Avenue in Peter Street in the settlement area of Essex Center. Um, the official plan designation for these lands is, is residential, but the zoning designation is actually Commercial District 1.1, which permits a variety of commercial uses. And the proposal, um, in front of you tonight is to sever a 2,460 square meter parcel. And that would be the area outlined in blue, um, the one that's shaped almost like, like an L for the creation of a new commercial lot. The commercial use is unknown at this time and any development of the severed parcel and of the retained parcel would be subject to site plan control approval and would have to be in accordance with the zoning bylaw. The retained commercial law, which is the area in green, that is proposed to have an area of 6,430 square meters. Next slide, please. Thank you. And considering this application, we ran it through the provincial planning statement, ran it through, um, the test of consistency. And the provincial planning statement states that settlement areas such as Essex Center, they are to be the location and focus of growth and development. It supports further intensification of employment uses and it provides for a wider variety of commercially available lots. With respect to the County of Essex Official Plan, the application conforms because it increases the concentration of commercial uses along Maidstone Avenue, which is a commercial corridor, and it utilizes municipally provided services. In terms of its conformity with the Town of Essex Official Plan, we also found that it conforms because, um, commercial lots along Maidstone Avenue have a variety of, of shapes and sizes. It, this particular proposal would maintain frontage on a, on a public street and would have access to municipal services. And it's also in an appropriate location, especially due to its proximity to, to Highway three with high traffic generation. In terms of its compliance with the Town of Essex zoning bylaw, there, there were no issues in terms of meeting the minimum lot width and, and lot area. Of course, as part of site plan approval, we were, we will ensure that any proposed commercial use will meet minimum parking standards and, uh, any regulations respecting building height and lot coverage. Next slide, please.
Someone to, thanks there.
Thank you.
Thanks there, Rita.
Next slide, please. Thank you. We have circulated the application notice of the application to all, uh, property owners within 60 meters of the subject lands. We received no objections or no comments from members of the public as of the date of publishing of this presentation, which was November 12th. We also circulated it internally to our departments with no objections, as well as external agencies such as the County of Essex with no objections received. Next slide, please. So provided that the application So provided that the application is consistent with the provincial planning statement, conforms to the Town of Essex Official Plan and County of Essex Official Plan, and no further amendments to the zoning bylaw are required, the Planning Division is recommending approval of the application subject to the standard conditions listed in front of you, uh, with, with the addition of condition number five. And, and that this condition is with respects to easements that apply on the subject lands. We want to ensure that they are updated, um, if required as a result of, of the severance. That's it.
The applicant, do they have anything to say? Add to it? No? Okay. Um, is there any delegates wishing to speak about the application? Go ahead there.
I just had a question. So through the chair, um, the, the blue property that comes across, it looks like it runs through a road. Is that, um, is that a town-owned property or is that? Like, what is, would, would the property be split? Or are we proposing, or is it not our, is it not a municipal road? That would be my only question. The blue, the blue L, it looks like a road runs through there. I can't read what the name of the road is, but would that be, is that a municipal road or would it be actually two parcels?
Rita, do you want to, Matt, so it's actually on recorded that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I will, I will answer that question. Um, Bear Street up to the limit of, of the, the blue hatched area, that, that's a local road. Um, anything within that blue hatched area, I know it looks like there's, there's a piece of that road, that's not owned by the Town of Essex. That's actually within the, the ownership of, of the property owner. Um, maybe in the future, I can defer this to the applicant, but there might be an opportunity in, in the future to convey that to the town.
Anyone else has? Not seen anything? Any questions from the committee? Oh, sorry. Okay, if you want to go to, oh.
So that piece of land that you're seeing there? I'm Corey, San Onsh, I'm the, uh, agent for the applicant. Um, so that piece of road is currently in the process of being conveyed over to the town. And so that subsequently will make a separate lot directly adjacent to the Canadian Tire once that happens.
Any other? Matthew, yeah, Matthew, go ahead.
Here, just, just, uh, one quick question, because it's not explicitly stated in this, in the planning report, but, um, were any comments received on the, um, circulation?
The chair? No, there, there were no comments received on the circulation.
Anything else? Not seen? Go ahead there, Doreen.
And if there are no other comments, uh, motion to approve with conditions as noted. Thank you.
Bill, a seconder. All in favor? Any opposed? Not seeing anything. Motion, application passed. Okay, there's no other action. All right. And then the final, the final application tonight is B twenty-eight dash twenty-five. Rita?
Thank you. Through the chair. Again, I'm going to give Ms. Buckta a moment to pull up our slides. Thank you. Um, application B twenty-eight, twenty-two five is a consent application. Thank you. Through the chair again. Application B twenty-eight, twenty-two five is a consent application, and it concerns the vacant residential lands along Maidstone Avenue West that are highlighted on, on the top figure on this slide. The official plan designation of these lands is residential, and these lands are located in the settlement area of Essex. The zoning category for these lands is Residential District one point one, which permits semi-detached dwellings and additional dwelling units as well um, within each semi-detached dwelling unit. The proposal, um, in front of you tonight is to facilitate the construction of a semi. Um, you're, you're not approving the semi as a use. A semi is already, uh, permitted, but it's a subdivision of the land, which is required to divide along the common interior wall each semi-unit on its own separate lot in order for it to classify as a semi-detached dwelling. The consent will also allow for the addition of additional dwelling units in each of those semis for a total of six dwelling units over the entire building. And in the second figure, um, on the screen there, you will see how the property is proposed to be divided in equal halves. Next slide, please. In this slide, we have provided the committee and members.
Thanks, Matthew. Go ahead there, Rita. Sorry.
Thank you. And, and through the chair again. In this slide, you will see building elevations for the proposed semi. Um, there are front elevations, uh, the, uh, top left corner. There's also side elevations as well as rear elevations, um, for your understanding. Next slide, please. So again, we have put the application through the test of consistency with the provincial planning statement. And we have found that it is consistent as it's, as the growth and development is proposed in a settlement area. It's considered intensification, which is what we must permit in settlement areas. And it's also a compact form of housing which meets the needs of the Town of Essex. In terms of its conformity with the official plan, with respect to the County of Essex Official Plan, um, the application would conform because it utilizes municipal services along Maidstone Avenue. It further diversifies the available housing stock within Essex. And it provides two freehold semi-detached dwelling units with additional dwelling units, which are new housing options for the area. Additionally, its conformity with the Town of Essex Official Plan, um, we have found that it conforms. There are no anticipated impacts to the neighborhood as a result of the development. It is considered compatible with neighboring land uses, which are also residential. It maintains the residential use with a slight increase to site density. Um, and again, in our opinion, it's considered gentle density within a predeveloped area of Essex. With respect to the Town of Essex zoning bylaw, it does comply with all applicable zoning regulations. Um, resulting, the, the lots are larger than the typical lots that you would normally see for semi-detached dwellings. Um, this is an eighty-foot wide lot, so split in half. Each semi-detached dwelling unit would be on a forty-foot wide lot. And it also provides for one extra parking space than what is required under the Town of Essex zoning bylaw. So each semi-detached dwelling unit would have four parking spaces, onsite parking spaces. None are proposed in garages for a total of eight surface parking spaces. Next slide, please. We have circulated the application, um, in terms of standard circulation to all property owners within sixty meters of the subject site. We didn't receive any comments or objections from members of the public as of November twelfth, twenty-two five, when we published the presentation. We also did not receive any objections from internal departments, um, specifically our infrastructure department or building department. And we didn't receive any objections from external agencies, specifically from the County of Essex Roads Department. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so finally, in consideration of the proposal's consistency with the provincial planning statement and conformity with the official plans of the County of Essex and Town of Essex, the Planning Division is recommending approval of the application subject to the following conditions, which are, which are standard for the subdivision of a semi-detached dwelling. Thank you.
Can have anything more to add? Nope, nope, you're good. Anyone from the public have anything to ask? Seen any, anything from the committee? Dan, go ahead.
Question, if we can go back to the, uh, aerial shot of the property, just seeing the, the parking spaces that are being allocated for this project? So my question would be to the applicant, is the parking going to be at the rear of this or front of this?
The property, uh, it doesn't show it on that site plan, but if you go back to the slide with the elevations, the parking will be on each end. So if you look at the stack, the three windows, you would have four, you'd have the four parking spaces on each side at that location for both properties.
Any questions? Oh, go ahead there, Bill. You had your hand up first.
But I'll wait if there's a question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have a question. I, I guess if Bill's going to make the motion, I'll just observe that, um, getting back to earlier discussion, you know, at least I talked about location being really important for developments like this. And for me, this one seems much better suited. It has already been noted, and I appreciate the emphasis. There's four parking spaces where only three are required. Um, it, it's, it's an area of town with larger lots. Um, it's a single structure and, and density increases will be gentler. And perhaps as important as anything, it's in, in, in a part of town where the neighborhood character is actively changing. There are a variety of housing types and commercial land uses there. So, um, I look forward to Bill's, uh, next statement.
Um, I move, um, accepting of this application with the conditions and for all the points that were noted as well.
Matthew?
We stated yes with conditions.
Yep, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we. All right, can we have a motion to receive the presentations? Doreen, second by Dan. All in favor? Any opposed? No. And motion to adjourn. Dan and Matt. Thank you.